We aren't funding playgrounds. We aren't funding LED lighting. And all four of those don't really affect our level of service. The only one I'll note is the LED. That's about cost savings. The quicker we can change out our LED lighting, the quicker we can recoup our cost savings there.
And so what is that line item? Because as I jot notes of potential savings, the 3% increase at FPL. I know we have a pretty aggressive energy-saving program, but if I were to challenge that department to hold the expense consistent, they would come back to the LED program. That it does yield a benefit if I said, "I don't want to pay a 3% increase in FPL." And Mitzi said, "Then quit using so much electricity."
Right. It's right now, we've had for a number of years, a half a million dollar allocation to the LED program to switch out our lighting. This year, we take that.
One year.
One year. Just this funding cycle, we take that half a million dollars out.
And what cost savings operationally do we yield from a $500,000 investment in LED lighting?
I don't want to answer that off the top of my head, but I can sure compute.
Is it more than 20 million or less than 20 million?
Oh.
Less?
It's less than that.
Thank God.
Can you give me a ballpark estimate that I won't hold you accountable to?
There's probably, in classrooms, there's probably a 20% or 25% reduction in the cost of electricity just with lighting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there are a lot of studies just in general for any commercial use of LED lighting.
Right.
I mean, there is a long sustaining benefit. I know when we put this last time, I was saying, and you said at the presentation, this is going to likely increase our energy costs, but we would, so we'd be pushing it off for a year. It was just one year.
Just one year.
So I don't think that the life cycle savings would be that significant in a one-year period. I don't, I mean.
Well, but you have that equipment by. You have every year, you've skipped an equipment by, so it impacts every operating budget from that point forward. It's not just the additional savings in that year.
Okay. I mean, that's true. I just, I.
We didn't, to your point, we're not adding that 500 back. We're taking out once, a half a million, once. We're not making another year a million to double up.
Right.
Got it. Okay.
So we take out the half a million in one year, but to Dr. Bowden's point, we don't add a half of the.
Permanent loss of that impact.
That is permanent loss in this year. So it permanently pushes it out.
And what playgrounds will we, would we be delaying?
We had a, so three years ago, we established, and you may remember, a commitment to making all of our playgrounds, to improving all of our playgrounds, and it just, there's a couple of them that we would have to push off for a year. And we don't, I'm not entirely certain which ones they are, to have to look into.
I was just wondering if they were, if they were at E. Booker or, you know, socioeconomic area. That's where I'm coming from.
It's a life cycle replacement model that is built on. So there's a year where you delay life cycle replacement, but if you want to know specific schools, that's.
I do, please.
So the other projects continuing, the ones that we would be taking out for one year only, covered walkways, the rubberized track, we don't take it out. We move it out a year. There was a skipped year, so we're just taking what was going to be in this year and we move it to year two.
That, that's one that, you know, I thought we were, that's not the one for down in Venice?
No, that one's complete.
Done.
That one's done, oh, good.
Venice is done. This would have been, I believe, pine due.
You know, I noticed we didn't cut back on the district portable demolitions. I mean, I mean, do we?
Yes.
We do need all that.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Never mind. Go ahead.
Can you clarify why, though? I mean, that's.
Why? Because it's not just demolitions. It's demolitions and movement. And so as our camp.
Cost incurred, yeah.
Right. So as campuses like Ashton grow, we look for where we can pull them from or move, you know, so Ashton and Taylor and Tatum, those three are getting new portables. There's three campuses that are losing portables. We use that fund to make those changes.
It is still $8,000 to $10,000 to hook up those portables?
Depends on if utilities are close or onsite or not, how far you have to pull the utility. It's a, it's a good 10,000 if the utilities are closed.
So I knew it was a lot of.
Yeah.
Worst-case scenarios, you have to bring in an electrical substation, and so it can be much more expensive. And in fact, we use that same budget line item to do the utility work associated with portable moves, too.
Continuing down into technology, we, for one year, we take out the IT flexible space and devices, and then we also take out Tel Studios. And those are, that's the end of the projects that we take out for one year of funding.
And there's a reduction in classroom instructional technologies that Joe agreed to let us do as well.
And that was based on his actual use of it.
Right.
He wasn't willing to die over that one?
No, he wasn't willing to die over that one.
Mickey Ryan threatened him, I think.
Yeah.
I'd take Mickey Ryan in that fight.
Yeah. So those are, those are the projects that we take out for one year of funding. And to Dr. Bowden's point, none of those projects get doubled up somewhere else. We just take them out for a year of funding.
And it's important to know that that's less a financial decision than it is our ability to do the work decision. Because there were, as I think I said on the sixth, there's three components to this discussion. There's the money, there's our internal ability to manage projects, because we have a pretty small cadre of people that do it, and then it's our ability to lean on eight design-build firms to get the work done. So part of this is just, if our effort is going to be focused on physical security of our schools summer of 2018, then that's where our effort needs to be focused. And that means necessarily not having it in other places.
And I don't, and I don't know if the plan was, because I know from time-wise, once we go through the CIP and the discussion, because I think the borrowing is the big issue.
It is.
I was wondering if there will be an update, because I wanted to share some of the information you shared with me as far as the design-build discussion, but I don't want to jump ahead. But, so, just in time-wise, if we have extra time. But, so, today, what do you, you need direction on whether or not?
Well, we need direction on whether or not you're comfortable with the two new proposals that you're being presented, or if you have an inclination one or the other, or if you would like us, as Scott and I have said, we can do, continue to revise this and bring you yet one or two more scenarios that have funding in different places. And if so, are there projects that you, that you would like to see either brought back, moved? That's what we're looking for, is how much more work are you, are you comfortable with either of these? Or, and we can go on to the rest of the capital improvement plan development, or do we need to continue working on the capital improvement plan budget?
And let me say, if I could, just piggyback on that. We really need to, I appreciate Kathy's flexibility, but that creates a real challenge for us. We've got, we've got firms chomping at the bit. We have sat in a room with them and asked them to understand why we might redirect some of their efforts this summer. It's the time of year when we would typically be designing projects, particularly a big project like the renovation of the Northport front office. So my point is, every day costs us in terms of our ability to get things done. So for me, the best case would be walk away today knowing, are you happy with the direction we're heading? Are we going to borrow or not? And tell us, go forth and conquer, at least for '18, '19. Because the challenge that Dr. Bowden's given us is doable but big, and the sooner we start, the more apt we are to be successful.
Shirley.
I would like to see you go forward with the amendment, the attachment three, the one that we don't have to borrow yet. You know, it doesn't give me heartburn to borrow, because I know that with interest costs low and everything else, I think we end up saving more by getting it done now versus costs that, it'll cost us more in the future. But I'm not concerned about that dropping below the seven and a half, because we've also included, I think, the Capital Milletage Charter transfer to the charter schools. You know, we don't know that that's going to happen again. Maybe the legislature will give us another pass on that. Maybe the lawsuit will come out that we don't have to do that. So I think that as long as that's still out there, that might happen, I would rather go through and drop below our, you know, requirement, because it's only the one year that it drops. But go through the example, the attachment three without the borrowing at this time. If we still have to share those dollars, you know, I might want to look at that again next year, but I don't think we need to do it this year. That's why.
And I think if that's the direction the board decided to go, I honestly believe we could make that whole. You know, one of the things that we have out there is we haven't yet closed the book on a couple of pretty big projects. STC Northport, which, that budget's pretty tight, as you know, we've talked about, so I don't expect a lot there. But the Sarasota High renovation is the other one. And typically, what happens is as we close those contracts, there's money in the budget that doesn't get allocated, and it rolls into the reserve. So I have some hope that as those projects close, you'll see that happen, and it will nibble away at that $900,000 number.
I'm glad you brought up SHS, because I wanted to, and I don't know, drilling down in, looking ahead in my crystal ball, which I don't have, if there were to be a, the discussion of the closure of, or extension or closure of School Avenue. Is there cost implications to?
There could be. There could be, and we haven't, we.
And those are not embedded in year one?
They are not, they are not embedded in the capital improvement plan, at all.
At all. Do we have an estimate of what that would look like?
No, we don't.
Because that's, that would be valuable.
We don't, we don't yet have an understanding of where that's going to lead.
Financially, or, I mean, take the decision.
Financially, financially, we, as you know, we're completing the traffic study that's related to that. And as part of that traffic study, there is a, there is a provision in there where staff needs to work together to identify any improvements that would need to happen adjacent in order to compensate for the road closure. Staff has that meeting scheduled for after break. So I think after break.
Do you know the date? It was like April?
It's April, it's the Tuesday, whatever Tuesday, April, is that April 6?
Oh, no, yeah.
All right, yeah, April 2nd, April 3rd. Immediate, that Tuesday, immediately after break, the staffs from Sarasota, the city of Sarasota County and the school board are getting together to walk the site and figure out what proposed. So we'll have a better understanding of what, what that would be after we meet with them and get an understanding of what improvements we'd need to make.
And that could be substantial? I mean.
No, I don't think so.
To the extent that it's signage and street markings and things like that.
Okay.
And we would, we would likely take that out of safety and security, because there is, there is wiggle in the safety and security budget. Just to give credit where credit is due, Kathy actually suggested that we put a wedge in this budget, and I'm the one who asked her not to, simply because we didn't want to get too far out in front of your discussion and the discussion with the.
Right, and then to be fair, I know we haven't had that collectively as a board, but I just didn't want to leave this, the planning process and not.
There could be a consideration, and there could be other considerations as we work with the city towards getting School Avenue closed. So we need to be mindful that that's out there, but I think that there, even with that, in fact, Ms. Goodwin asked me that question yesterday, and I assured her, even with not knowing what could happen to School Avenue and what cost implications there are, I think there's plenty of room for us to review this. And again, that $20 million borrow doesn't, isn't this year. It's a next-year decision. So if next year conditions change, other issues change, it's not a decision you're saying yes or no, just because you take it off this year, because we believe there's enough allocation in it, we can always revisit it.
I just want to clarify, because I was part of the conversation at Sarasota High School, is that if the city commission tomorrow agreed to abandon that road, we do have the capacity within the current Sarasota High budget to fence it off. Now, it would still look like there's a road running through the middle of the campus, but if you go up to Manatee High, it looks like there's a road running between their main building and the stadium, and it's been that way for years. We would have to bring a capital project of, what does it look like to pull the road up, put in sidewalks and sod? But we could immediately act on the closure of School Ave. It might just look like there used to be a road running through the middle of the campus. Is that correct?
That is correct.
In fact, there's about a $500,000 wedge in that $25 million number that actually came from Nathan Renner from Tandem, who's the guy who's been helping us order the materials and things. So yes, it's part of the 25.
So no change to the capital budget would allow for the immediate closure of School Ave?
Yes.
Okay, that's clear. On the record, Caroline and then Shirley.
The Northport renovation, that would be for safety and security?
Which part of it?
The line item in here is not. It's the 3.5 million in the first year is a chiller replacement.
That's right.
That's air conditioning. And then the out-years is essentially, you know, think about it, Northport High School is now about 20 years old.
I know.
And so the out-year numbers are really kind of what we've been calling HVAC projects. They're kind of on steroids, but we'd be working the air side of the air conditioning system across all of those buildings, and then upgrading their science labs to make them equivalent to what you see at Sarasota.
So what's going to be moved?
Up against high schools.
What's going to be moved in terms of?
Northport.
North.
That's what I thought you said, you were going to move forward, back.
No, Northport.
Move to the left.
Yeah, Northport actually moved to the left. We brought that up a year because of that being a priority project. Jody Dumas was very insistent that the longer we delay the Northport project, the more vulnerable we are to having some facility concerns on that campus. So that actually moved to the, moved over.
And the other one, has Inglewood Elementary?
Inglewood Elementary did move to the right. If we had followed last year's budget to this year's budget, it would have been in this year's funding cycle. But we still have some planning left to do there, so even moving it one year is okay, because we wouldn't have really started that project for another year.
Is that just one building?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that the building that I looked on? I do feel, remember that I came to you and said I thought there was mold in that building?
Maybe. It's the, the air quality in the building is fine today. I don't want anybody to think it's not. It's the building that, it's the building when you walk in, there's a very narrow hallway. It's got, it's got really funny-shaped restrooms. It has a couple of classrooms on each end. It's a, part of the reason that we're advocating demolishing and rebuilding that building, which we didn't do for any others at Inglewood, is as we walk through there with our building official and say, what does modern air conditioning system look like? How do we have a good ingress and egress to spaces? It just isn't possible. And so to make it usable, the only way to get there and make it usable long-term is rebuild it. So it's relatively small building, six or eight classrooms.
Yeah, it's pretty small. That, that, moving that one really had to, again, Scott was talking about the three components of it. That's a, that's a, can we get that done this year, given our prioritization for safety and security? And the answer was no. So that moved not, that moved because our ability to get work done.
Okay. I don't, I don't have a problem with not borrowing money if we don't need to borrow it. I just want to make sure that the stuff gets done. I'm tired of it being pushed out, and we're never getting to it.
And I'll go, Jane, I know you want to say, to that point, and I know I've had conversations, I would ask to get the sentiment, but I, my feedback that has been from many of the administrators, even who have had to see their project be delayed, have done so, understandably so, given the implication. At least that's the feedback I've had.
It would be.
Right, of course. So I think that's, yeah, I mean, my hat's off to them. That was a positive statement.
I would take that farther than just the, I've not heard from the first PTA president, the first student government president. It extends to the entire school community, that there's a clear understanding that safety and security is a priority. There hasn't been the first, hey, why did our project move, or what's going on?
That is correct.
It's been great.
Jane.
Well, I too am interested in attachment three or item three. I think that if we do not have to borrow money, this is a good thing. I know that it was out a year. I'm not adverse to borrowing money in the future if we find the need, you know, penny wise and pound foolish, we really have a very low amount of debt. Sometimes that gets us into trouble, and many times it doesn't, which is, was great. And I think the reserves that we set are very healthy. I will just say this, in going to other school districts, which I do periodically and fairly often, I am always happy to get back to Sarasota County, because we really maintain our buildings in every way, from the way we clean a facility and a restroom, to managing all kinds of upgrades and upkeep on roofs and so forth, so much better than a lot of other schools are able to do. And we do manage the budget very, very well. So my hat's off to you, Kathy, for your planning expertise, and for you, Scott, and your, your team, because I think it's very evident to me that we run this very much like a business, and we run this with, with a great deal of pride, because we do have great facilities. I mean, I, I was at Inglewood Elementary this week and waving signs with some of the parents, and they are so proud of their school there. And, and in every place I go, Lamarck. And I mention Lamarck because, you know, a few years ago, we had an issue with odor that we could not get out of that building. And everything is just great today, and it's a beautiful, beautiful school. So my hat's off to our facilities, to our construction services, and to you all for your, your leadership, because it's certainly different in other districts.
I will say.
Buses, too. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Buses, too, it's interesting, I pay a lot of attention to, when I see them on the road, and every once in a while, I'll see a bus that looks, kind of looks bad. And so I, I try to catch up to it to see what the number is. And yeah, and the first thing I look at is, say Sarasota District Schools on the side, and it never does.
Yeah.
So anytime I see a bus that looks bad, it's someone else.
You must all do the same thing.
I was meeting yesterday with some Public Works team from the city of Northport about some work that we're trying to jointly do at Lamarck. And we were on the backside of the campus, and they looked at me and said, is this the front or the back? And I said, no, this is the back. And the director of Public Works, she said, well, that's because at our schools, they look as good in the front as they look in the back. And so, yeah, it is a major kudos to our facility and construction team that our buildings not only look good when you see them, but you look good when you look all around them.
I, well, I'm glad to hear that we, you guys have continued to work hard so that it's not putting us in a position where we have to borrow, because I know I said, after the workshop on the March 6th, I think you guys did a tremendous job in a very short amount of time to bring forward options, and I think you guys have continued to work really hard. So I'm encouraged to hear that no one right now wants to see any borrowing on, on the table. And the other part I wanted to.
Yeah, I've spoken.
Oh, excuse me.
Maybe I want to blow.
Yeah, go ahead. Eric, did you want to say anything? Well, no, but one thing I wanted to, because I know I pushed really hard on this the last meeting, was as it relates to the design-build, our construction teams moving forward with some of the projects as it related to hardening our schools. And I know you had shared, I don't know if I wanted, I don't know if that's been confirmed, but it sounded so, there, I wanted to see if there were some elements from a design aspect that we could overlap to save from design fees. And apparently, that would, had come up organically from some of our members or partners that are helping us to reduce costs. And I thought that was incredibly encouraging. So that makes me very happy.
And if I could share the, I could share with the rest of the board, the one I shared with you, and I'll not name the firms.
That's right.
No favoritism, but I'll give you one example. So we had all of our design-build leadership in a room, and we were kind of walking them through, that we just said, you know, we want to be transparent with you about what it is, what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how it impacts you. Because in some cases, we were actually canceling contracts. And we did talk specifically about, you know, we're going to set a technical specification, and regardless of which one of the firms is, for example, putting in fences, we're going to use the same kind of fence. And maybe even the school board goes, buys, you know, a million linear feet of fence, and then you take it from us. While we were having that conversation, one of our project managers from, one of our superintendents from one of the design-build firms raised his hand and said, you know, in my car, I have a building inspector-approved design of a gate. The engineering is in my trunk. He said, if you want me to bring that in and lay it on the table, we can use this as our standard ornamental fencing gate. And he was in a room with all of his competitors.
Which is huge.
And volunteered, and his boss was sitting there, too. Yeah, and for him to say that, I mean, it really just set the stage for this kind of collaborative conversation with people who are normally in competition with each other, recognizing they're going to make decisions in the best interest of our kids and your budget. So, yeah, it felt good.
Yeah, I was very encouraged to hear that, so. Eric, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, I think after careful deliberation, I'm going to go with not borrow, so.
Thank you for chiming in.
I really agree. But I do want to, I do want to bring back that, something that Ms. Ziegler has talked about in the past, is, again, just doing all this capital without training staff about it doesn't do anything. I mean, I've seen doors popped open, and they have little stop signs that say, please close the door after you go, but they're still popped open. A lot of it that I see is after school hours, if it's the only way, you know, people come, you know, in and out. But, you know, training is going to be an integral part of, you know, you just can't build the systems without making sure staff and how they operate in that system.
Part of what.
And again, I do want to point out that, I know she hates when I say this, but Ms. Brown was the first one that came, come out of the door about not wanting to borrow, so.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you again, Shirley.
Part of what you hear Mr. Andreas say over and over again, as he talks about safety and security, is he uses the phrase "system of security," and that's exactly what he's talking about, is you can put all these things in place, but if they're not connected together in a meaningful way and supported by policy, you're right, it fails. All the security in the world doesn't work if you put a.
No. The human capital.
Todd always uses the example flip-flop, but you stick a flip-flop in a door, and all of a sudden, your security's no good. So he's right, so.
So you had two burning questions for us. Number one, are we going to borrow? And number two, is it full speed ahead on the $25 million safety and security capital improvements? Do you have clear direction on both of those issues before you leave us?
No.
Yes.
Okay.
I know we are short on time, but, and Shirley, I wanted, I wanted to check with the board if we can either, I do, we need to go to number four, it's important. But I wanted to open up the conversation of School Avenue, whether it be here later on today or not, just to get a sense.
I think we're supposed to have a joint meeting with the city. That's what we asked the superintendent to do.
You've asked for a joint meeting with the county, not the, no, you've asked for one actually with the county, but never formally have you asked for one on the city. I think you need to do it under new business.
Right, no, so I, for heads-up purposes, I, and we have had, I know, conversations individually, but not with each other, for the public, but with staff. And so we've never had a conversation from the board. So I can, happy to wait till this afternoon, but it's timely. It came up just because I wanted to make sure from a funding standpoint, whether it be joint meeting, a resolution, or as chair, understanding what the will of the board is, if we write a letter to them requesting such action be taken, because it is incumbent upon them. Separate from the study, there is some overlap, and I don't, just because you're here, I don't know if you can give some clarity as to.
Can I, am I allowed under this to at least give a schedule where staff is right now?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
So where staff is today with School Avenue, we have, as you know, been working very diligently and cooperatively with our partners at the city of Sarasota. We started the study in the late fall. It is now in draft form. It's in its second draft. We're expecting it will be complete after spring break. We've put the date of April 13th, but I'm hoping that we're actually going to beat that date. As I said, the Tuesday after spring break, which I think is the third, we have a meeting with staff, the joint meeting with staff to walk the campus, identify any improvements, adjacent improvements that may be needed, whether they're signage, whether they're crosswalks, those lights on the road, some things like that. We also had it tentatively in our kind of planning for it, to bring to you that study for workshop at the April workshop, so that you could review it. And then schedule a joint meeting with, with the City of Sarasota.
Needed.
Hopefully to happen as early as late April, as late as early May, but we would like to get it done fairly quickly.
And just, I'm sorry, Shirley, yeah, go ahead.
It is, yeah, I wanted to talk about this back when we were talking on School Avenue. The Neighborhood Association is meeting on...
March 27th.
Yes.
They sent out a public notice.
They are, they are meeting, they are meeting next week. To be honest, unless you direct me otherwise, we had planned not to attend that meeting. And I've talked to my colleague at the City of Sarasota, and he is also planning not, on not attending the meeting. And it's because we will have to do a workshop, once we get the authorization to go forward and put in a solicitation for vacation of the roadway, as part of the process to vacate that road, we will have to do a neighborhood workshop. Right now, the only time we...
You're saying "we," but that's the city, that's after the city has taken action. Is that correct? Or is it joint?
Well, it is, it depends. So there's, so that's kind of the process to get to the point of the decision-making. I think at the, what we as staff are expecting that will come out of the joint workshop between the city and the, the school board, is that we will be given direction as to how you all would, how jointly you want to proceed. This is one of those areas that we can't act independently. There has to be a determination by the city to vacate School Avenue between, from the Hatton to Tama Sola. That's what we're ultimately looking to happen. There's two ways that that could happen. One, the city initiates a vacation process. Two, we initiate a vacation process. Either way, it, vacating a road needs to go through the site planning process. So there needs, and one of the first things that has to happen in the process to do a site plan, is we do a joint workshop, we do a community workshop. I have talked to our colleagues at the City of Sarasota, the planner, planner that I've been working is Ryan Chapte Lane, and we agree that that meeting should happen at the campus, on Sarasota High's campus. It would not just involve the neighborhood of, the Alta Vista neighborhood, who has made it very clear as to their standpoint, is where they stand on this, which is status quo. That's what they're accepting. So we would like to do a neighborhood meeting on the campus, invite parents, invite then the Alta Vista neighborhood, invite all their neighborhoods that are surrounding it, and get a more balanced community input than we've, feel that we've had so far to date.
Following up on... Wait, I'm sorry, hold on, hold on. Todd, then Caroline. I'm sorry, Todd, then Shirley, then Caroline, I think is how it was.
All right, so, trying to choose my words, maybe I shouldn't be that careful. You've done a very good job of articulating the process to permanently vacate a road.
Right.
Is there a process that would allow for the temporary fencing off of that road while that process is taking place?
Yes.
I think there's a limitation on our patience here. I want to commend David Jones, the only reason their student body didn't march on the council is because he said, let the process unfold. But I think everyone's patience are starting to expire. And so, I understand there's a process, there has to be studies and all of this, but can we declare a state of emergency and get that campus secured? How do we get it done quicker? Is there another avenue?
Amen agreement.
Yeah, so there's the other option, and we have, I haven't looked at it recently because we've been going down the vacation route, but there is another option, and that is to amend the interlocal. Actually, it's not really amend the interlocal, it's replace the interlocal, because the current one is so out of date, it would have to be replaced. So we could replace our interlocal agreement, and by replacing the interlocal agreement, now you don't have to go through the site planning process, because that's only required for vacation. We would, we have a draft in place that we did, got a year and a half ago. We've had it in place for quite a while that we've worked on with the city. It would have to probably be brought back up and looked at again. But the revised interlocal calls for the closure of Segol Avenue from Hatton Street to Tama Sola during school hours. And there's two versions. There's one version that does it just for the hours that we've currently talked about, which we have currently, which is basically 6:30 to 2:30. There's another version that goes 6:30 to 5:30, 6 o'clock, when school, the true school day is over.
But you make that permanent simply by changing the language in the...
Right. So either way, we could, we could do that now. We could bring that, bring that forward to the commission. We don't have to, we don't...
Simple majority vote of their commission?
Simple majority vote.
That's okay. So just for clarity, and I'm sorry, I don't want to, because I know you two want to speak, that I want, we buy, by action of the board, because we haven't discussed this, so I don't know where everyone stands, but my understanding is that if I were to request action, whether it be by way of resolution letter, or to send over a interlocal, I mean, the interlocal's different, but to request that they take action on School Avenue, there are steps that need to be done. Interlocal is the temporary, and then there's a longer vacation process that's on the city side.
Right.
Okay, that's the summary.
And either way, either way, understand, this does have to come from the city, because
That is correct.
It is a public, it is a public right of way, and on our own, we have no authority to, to either extend the current interlocal, revising our local, or vacate that road.
Okay, and I know...
...communication.
Yes.
The request for Dr. Bowden to do that would come from the board. You would sign a letter, but it has to come from the board.
That's correct. That's exactly what I said, I would be taking action.
Say, if I request Dr. Bowden...
I'm sorry, what?
You'll review the test, review the tapes. You'll see.
Okay. But, so what we could do, if you're looking for, we have, as I said, we drafted with the city's help and cooperation, a year and a half ago, an interlocal that does exactly what you're asking for. We could put it on the board agenda, either as a workshop item next month, to discuss it.
If you could provide me sample language of a motion, and what should be contained in the letter before the start of our 3:00 meeting tonight?
I can do that, Shirley.
Thank you.
Yeah. I also was going to make a motion that we do that. I know that you have talked to the Neighborhood Association, somebody talked to me on Tuesday night at...
Many times.
And, and he thought that the information you gave was very clear, and he thinks that, he totally agrees with where we are. And he says he will speak up at that meeting. But I, I think it might not be bad for her to be there to answer any more questions that they might have. Again, I don't know. Or do you feel it would be bad for you to be there?
I don't know that it's bad for me to be there. I just don't, having, having read that email, and we can certainly get a copy of that email, so everybody knows what we're talking about before the morning meeting this afternoon.
We all got a copy of it.
I don't, it seems very clear that they are, their, their position is, is what it is. It hasn't changed. And I'm not sure that me attending the meeting is going to change their mind. That is a group of neighborhood residents who feels very strongly that that pedestrian access needs to be maintained.
And you really might cause more friction by going there than not going there.
And we have nothing new to add. I mean, we've been having this dialogue, the first time I met with them was when Larry Leon was our chief of police, and Larry was with me. So we've been doing this for, for years, and I don't, I'd hate to see Kathy kind of go up there and be the sacrificial lamb without anything to gain.
Right.
If I, if, I mean, at my heart, as you all know, I'm a community planner, and I, and I really believe in working strongly with communities. But on this one, I'm not sure that...
I think we've tried.
We've tried. I'm not sure that, we know where they stand, they know where we stand.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to make, to give a heads up, and you were here, and because it has to be action on the board.
Before you leave the topic, too, one other thing Kathy talked about, workshopping the, workshopping the, the study. I don't know that we need to do that. I mean, frankly, I think what we wanted to hear from the board is, before we were in front of the city commission talking about joint, we wanted to make sure that, that you had an opportunity to talk, and we're on the same page. So if you leave this conversation feeling like you're there...
Then we don't need, yeah.
Is there, is there anything conceivably that could come out of that report, which would compel us to think that that road ought to stay active between...
Their recommendation is vacate.
Yes, their, their recommendation is for vacation of the roadway. So, no, there's nothing in that report that would make anyone change their mind as to where they stand. In fact, it just, it says exactly what Scott and I always suspected it would say, that the traffic impacts to that area is pretty minimal and can be diverted through the existing grid network.
Okay, all right.
Okay, now, can I make my comment?
Certainly.
I want to be very clear, I'm the person that brought up going, looking for, to take, get a COP, a COP. And the reason I did that, because when you tell me you need $25 million to upgrade our equipment, and for safety and security, and you tell me all of these projects are going to have to be moved to the right, and I've watched over the years them being moved to the right, I have to suggest to you, let's look at a bond. And I think it's within my best interest of my, of me, to ask you to do that, rather than just letting it go, and letting all the projects be pushed out to the right again. So, and people talk about that, they have to realize that that is part of a process, that you do want to see all your options, which included a COPs.
I think the, I think the legislature did you a favor when they kind of relieved you of the responsibility for charter school payments for a year, because that was almost half of the impact, so...
That's what did it.
Yes.
Otherwise, I still would be here asking for a COPs.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned it.
Okay. So, just so I'm clear, Dr. Bowden, you would like to see before your board workshop today is a copy of the draft interlocal that we have established in the...
No, I think there's a desire on the part of the board to take a formal vote in requesting action from the city. What I need from you is specifically, what is that action? Is it requesting a joint meeting? Is it requesting a...
I think it's...
Interlocal? And, I mean, what specifically are we asking for? So I need a sample motion of what should be in the letter, be it come from the chair or the superintendent. But what is it we're asking for? I mean, I can say, I request immediate action on School Ave. I want you to tell me what that means technically.
Okay, I will get you that.
What do you want it to be? I mean, it's, and I don't mean that as a smart aleck comment, but if the, if the city initiates, and Bridget and I have talked about this a little bit, are we asking the city to vacate the road? Are we asking the city to meet with you and talk about the vacation of the road? I mean, there's a couple of different ways that we could go.
Well, and that's, and that's why I wanted to see what the board thinks, because we've never had a collective discussion. My, mine would be to request that they add on their, that they, that they close the road, they vacate the road. But that's me, and that's where I don't know where the board, where the board stands.
But from your comments, we're requesting two actions. The immediate closure of School Ave during school time, and the acceleration of the formal, permanent...
Vacation.
Abatement, vacation, whatever. So, I mean, bottom line is, I'd like for them at their next meeting to vote to secure the campus of Sarasota High School. And so, I need you to tell me what that means.
So there's only two, and rather we initiate or they initiate, there's two ways that we can get to where we get...
Yeah, we're initiating it.
One is, one is that we proceed with the interlocal that we've already drafted, we proceed with the review of that and get that signed. That gives us the temporary, that at least gets us the permanent closure of the pedestrian access during the school day. The, so that's one thing, that's one way, and that's the interlocal. The second thing is the vacation of the roadway. And the vacation of the roadway, regardless of whether we initiate it or they initiate it, would have to go through a site planning process. So those, those are, those are your two avenues. I wish I could tell you that there's a way that can just be done quicker than that, but you're going to either do, revise the interlocal, or you're going to vacate the road.
I think we want to do both. I think we want an interlocal that secures that campus now on a temporary basis, and then to go through the vacation process to permanently assign that road to us, to allow us to permanently secure it. That's, I'm seeking confirmation from the board, but at the end of tonight's board meeting, I would like there to be some urgency in us communicating with the city of saying, how are we going to secure that campus now?
Out of request, and that's why it takes the board collectively, to at least a majority, so for it to be a letter from the board to them to seek action. We know, both staffs, they know what that action is, but...
I don't know.
It could certainly be approved at Edgeback.
Staff, the staff.
We know we've tried that.
No.
Okay, two things, and we are way over time, and I want to make sure, when we can, we can...
I think I'm just going to answer.
Okay, go ahead.
We have been working up to the elected level.
Yep.
It has been staff to staff. Never has this board asked their board to act.
And if you did the, if you were to bring the interlocal to a joint board work, if your request was, we want to schedule as soon as, as soon as possible, a joint workshop to discuss the interlocal, if both boards at that, at that joint meeting, which would be duly noticed and all the rest of it, were to approve that interlocal, it would happen at that meeting.
Would we not also at the same meeting want to put a timeline in place for the permanent vacation of that road?
Yes.
So there would be two items on the agenda for that night?
Right.
Okay. That's what I need, is that I need a motion that authorizes the chair and the superintendent to send a letter to the city requesting a meeting with the following agenda.
I can do that.
Okay.
Shirley.
Assuming that's the will of the board.
That's what we would vote on tonight.
That, that's what I was going to say. We're going to send the letter asking for the two things, that we wanted the immediate, or as soon as possible, that the closure of the pedestrians, and then work together for the vacation of the road.
And that would be a vote taken today, right? Yeah, Eric?
I just want to understand, because you made, you made a comment, I have no problem, I think what you're offering is a great short-term and long-term solution, and I think doing it through the, the interlocal agreement is almost genius. I think it's very smart. My only question is, is you made a comment that if we do the interlocal agreement, we couldn't just amend a portion just to add that on, that you would want to rework the entire interlocal agreement? My concern is, does that open up a whole can of worms?
No.
Or we really can't just do like an addendum, attachment, you know, specifically talk about this one issue?
If you saw the current interlocal, you'd realize that there's a lot of, there's a lot of information in the current interlocal that deals with things that were important 20 years ago, but are not, if you, if you, in the, in the language that...
I'm just concerned you're going to open up a whole can of worms, and we can bog down.
You're not, you're actually pulling in can of worms. It's this, the new interlocal as drafted is, is much more succinct and much more specific.
So we're not going to just be talking about School Avenue, we're talking about...
No, it's just School Avenue.
It's just School Avenue.
The original agreement included things like the board's responsibility for the extension of Hatton Street, and who's going to put signage out to notify the citizens of the closure hours, and there was just a whole lot of that procedural stuff.
I just don't want to get bogged down where a city commissioner says, I really want to close School Avenue, but there's this other issue that I don't want to change, and I just don't want to make sure that we don't end up opening up a can of worms.
The interlocal is not our complete relationship with the city. It is an interlocal unique to School Ave?
It is.
That's right.
And it was done like 1997.
It's 1996.
I just learned that myself.
Yeah. It is, it is a unique interlocal, but it, but the current one just deals with a whole lot of stuff that we needed to deal with back then, we don't need to deal with today. The new interlocal is much more streamlined, and actually takes a can of worms and puts them in the right place.
Which you gave to us a draft during the convocation, I believe, right?
We've had, we've had a draft out there many, for a long time.
You saw it, other elected officials did not.
Right. It was in our packet, I believe.
Yes, it was.
Okay, okay. That was relevant conversation, thank you for going off guard there, but I just...
Full speed ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And we are 30 minutes behind, so I apologize, but this is important, staff text policy and board policy.
I need you to be the text, we've got to get broken at 12:30.
So we're 30 minutes, right? We can push it.
Notice where I sat.
Yeah, we're fine. Good. Ready, go. No.
We are here to catch you up.
Okay.
Very, very briefly, in going through our policy review more generally, and in light of some recent events, we recognize that there was a gap in our policies, that certainly there had, needed to be some additions regarding the use of phones, and texting, and the like. Joe has done 99% of the work on this, so I want to give him the credit, and I think it is credit, not blame in this case, and has presented a policy based on his review of policies from other districts. There are some, although certainly not all, but we would like to get, get into the some category, and have our, have our own policy. So he has put this together, he and I have worked on it. We believe that this would strengthen the board's policies generally, and give you and the, both board members and employees, direction on how they are to conduct themselves. And it would certainly make, make it easier for us, on behalf of the board, to fulfill our obligation to respond to records requests. So, the policy is here, we can try to answer any questions you might have about it. Hopefully, it's reasonably self-explanatory. But in the interest of time, rather than go through it, we'll just respond to questions, if you have any.
Eric?
My first question is, probably the biggest use of text is probably teachers texting their students and putting the cell phone numbers up on the syllabus. You're not proposing that we give teachers a school cellphone, correct?
We are not, and to the contrary, we are suggesting that teachers should not be texting with students. We are suggesting they should use the district email if they want to communicate with students, except for certain exceptional circumstances.
And then, and as far as it goes to social media, you talked about, you know, briefly touched on Facebook and stuff, and for whatever reasons, I've had other school board members post on my Facebook page, and once they do that, I, probably wrongly, I said, please post on my Facebook page, and once they do that, I, probably wrongly, I said, please don't post on my Facebook page, because it ends the conversation. They continue to do, I just simply ignore them, but what, what are your suggestions when?
Well, I don't, I don't know that that particularly is covered by this, but communications between board members generally, the same rules apply, whether it's Facebook or, or anywhere else, emails, and that is that while it is not a violation of the Sunshine Law
I was talking about the public records
For one board member to communicate to the other board, to another board member, the problem with the Sunshine Law comes when there is a colloquy back and forth.
I was talking about, not Sunshine, I was talking about public records.
I mean, it depends, it depends if it's, if it's about business, that something's getting posted, then potentially that's certainly a public record.
I'm not talking about the posting because, about my dog, I'm talking about
School district
School district
Well, if there are, if there are public records that come to you as a board member outside of your district-issued email account, then you need to find a way to preserve that. And this, this policy does address that and suggests, for example, if you have a Gmail account, you know, private account, and a constituent, or
But I, I forward it, no, my issue is a Facebook post.
Well
I have other school board members posting things on my Facebook about school-related incidents.
Take a picture and email.
Well, the responsibility would be to preserve that. How best to do that? I would turn to Mr. Binzweiger, because I don't, I don't even have a Facebook account.
I supposed to take a picture and
So what I would say is, each circumstance, we would treat individually. So if there is an instance like that, I know that you have my phone number, so don't hesitate to give me a call, and we'll work through that to make sure that it's preserved and abides by the regulations that Sunshine Law. You know, part of what this policy addresses and part of the conversation that the superintendent and I have had is when Sunshine Law was originally put into place, no one really had any idea that everyone would walk around with one of these in their pocket and be communicating wildly rampant on it. So how
Joe, my issue's not Sunshine Law.
No.
My issue's public records.
I understand. And so after, I will be making a note, a note to get in contact with you to address the Facebook questions that you have and make sure that we're handling those appropriately in a public records after this board workshop and board meeting.
I look forward to talking to you privately.
Yeah, thanks.
Shh, any, Shirley.
I would think that, you know, we're not doing board work on Facebook. I mean, people might be commenting about an article in a paper or something, but I would think most of the stuff that would happen, I mean, we're not talking, I would hope that we're not talking about things we're going to be taking action on. I mean, that, that would clearly have to be, but if it's a transitory issue, like as you describe in, in D, I mean, I, I mean, because I know that I will, somebody posts an article from a newspaper or from another site or something, and I might like that, you know, just, well, now that I know they track all my likes, I might be liking less. Or, I mean, I've posted Way to Go Jane, you know, in the referendum. I mean, those things don't need to be saved, even, I mean
The, the medium is not the issue, whether it's a text, or an email, or Facebook, or a handwritten letter, if anyone still does those. The medium is not the issue, it's the content that's the issue. If it is a public record, it is a public record, whether it's in an email, a longhand, a letter, or a Facebook post. If it's a public record, we need to figure out a way to maintain it. If it's not a public record, then it's irrelevant what the, what the medium happens to be. So each one, I suppose, would, I can't just tell you, all these things are good, or all the, you know, all these things are public records, or all these things aren't. We would have to look at an individual circumstance to decide if something, some communication is, meets the definition of a public record.
And I would just say that one, our ethics class that we have to do every year goes into briefly, but, but it's the preservation that I think is the challenge with the, if you look at statute and the current day and age, it doesn't match up to the technological elements. So it, and it's incumbent upon us as, and the, and the entity organization to find mechanisms to properly preserve them.
Right, and that's a large part, not the only part, but a large part of the reason for this policy, is to make sure that we can preserve things that we need to be preserving. And in some respects, we're saying, don't use this medium of communication because it is difficult to preserve for us.
So when I said, congratulations, or good job, Jane Goodwin, when there was a post from CBS that we won the referendum, is that something we need to preserve? Or is that something I shouldn't have done?
Well, I don't believe it's something, I don't know that that meets the definition of a public record, and if it does, that example, I would say clearly is a transitory message that doesn't need to be preserved. Rather than, and I know it's easy for me to say, but rather than try to split all these hairs, my preference would be, we don't use those kinds of media to communicate. But, you know, I've said that for a long time about text messages, and I've in essence been outvoted, but because people just use text messages. So to the extent that they do, we need to figure out a way to preserve it, but I am, Joe and I are enlisting your assistance, we hope, by telling people, don't text. If they do, then it will be in violation of the policy, and that at least goes to help insulate the school board from liability.
And then they also, and the also differential is containment of what the equipment and devices that are used or provided, which is, but provided for district business.
And some of this is designed to try to, apart, separate and apart from any public records kind of issue, is to set some standards as to what's appropriate vis-à-vis student interaction, interaction between staff and student.
I know that teachers use text messages to contact, because they, they can't make phone calls, or they can't receive phone calls during the day, and sometimes you've got a parent that
You have to end.
Wants something done or with their kid, where they have to go at the end of the day, or something changes, and where they need to make that contact. And we can't expect a teacher to be sitting there watching their email all day, but they can listen to that, that beep. I mean, I, to say that we don't want teachers using text messages, not to talk to students, maybe in high school perhaps, but to talk to parents.
It's a parent portal, they can go right in and drop an email like really fast.
Yeah, there's probably more liability. I know what you're saying by way of convenience, but I would say as an organization, there's probably more liability than
Well, I think then we need to, you know, definitely discuss this with our elementary director, and talk to the principals, and then talk to the parents and the teachers, because that is out there.
So if, if I can add to this, actually, we've already begun those conversations, we're looking at one of the platforms that we already use that has capabilities for teachers to communicate with parents via text messaging, that would actually all be archived and housed in a central location. Chris Renoff, executive director of elementary schools, is part of that conversation right off the bat. We do recognize that text messaging is a, a adopted means of communication, so how do we provide staff an opportunity to communicate in that fashion while also abiding by statute and, and policy and those various things? So I, I believe that by the start of next school year, we will have a platform in place that enables that for teachers to do so, and falls within these guidelines of the
So it's not here yet? We don't have it yet, but
Not, not, it is not implemented yet.
Okay.
And the policy specifically talks about with students.
Okay. But what about, because I know, well, I guess I've got a kindergarten teacher, they communicate with parents.
With parents, not with students.
So if they communicate with parents, are those not public records then to be saved?
They, they could be public records, they also could be public records that are confidential and exempt if they're education records.
Or transitory in nature as well.
Or transitory in nature. So to go to your example, if a parent texts, please call me at your break, that's fine. If it is, why did you do this, that, and the other, and I want to talk to you, and I want to talk to your principal, I mean, that's where you cross the line. The transitory, you know, my daughter, freshman in high school, texts her teachers and says, I forgot what tonight's homework assignment is, and it's chapter nine, problems one through five. That's transitory. If it is, I'm thinking about running for student government president, and I heard this other girl's running, and all this other stuff, that's off limits. But the transitory stuff, you can do. So we need, once this policy is adopted, it needs to go out, but it's going to have to go out with a cover letter, and that cover letter's probably going to be several pages long that explains the do's and don'ts. And then we need to, and that's been Joe's charge, is not pretend like texting doesn't exist, it is the preferred method of communication, sorry, Art, and we have to develop our own mechanisms for utilizing that.
Be smart.
And I do want to remind you that as school board members, you all have the ability to have a district-issued cellphone that has a texting function, and the texting function is archived, and so you don't need to worry, as long as you do your business through that phone. So I want to extend that invitation to you. I know some of you have taken us up on having a school board phone, paid for at district expense, that automatically archives text messages, and that you can clearly wall off the personal and the professional.
Is that already in the budget?
How much is that cost?
That's why I was saying, otherwise, I'm in.
We have a cellphone, no, it's in the cellphone line item, it's not in your individual cost center, but we have a, a line item that we provide cellphones. This is a district-issued cellphone, so that is available to you and does not require a budget amendment.
Just want to clarify
Yeah, the cost of the phone, I understand, and the contract is zero, it's the ongoing use of the phone that
Correct, so the contract that we have with Sprint right now, we receive phones for 99 cents for the cost of the phone, and then, yeah, and then Samsung Galaxy 8s are the current phones that we're using that are out there. And then, based on the data plan, it ranges from $20 a month to $40 a month, depending on kind of the appropriate use for staff and what they need.
Off-line, because we are on a tight timeline, but are there any additional questions?
On this then, should we have that electronic communication with students and parents? Or do you keep parents in, with non-students? Because I almost think the rules for students should be the same for parents, especially when you're looking at elementary.
Which, which
It's V, five, and six.
Do the elementary school kids, do they have a cellphone?
No. The elementary teachers won't be communicating with the students, they will be communicating with the parents. And I would think that the rules for the students and the rules for the parents would be pretty much the same. Or do you want to keep the parents with non-students? Because if I'm looking at it this with a
Well, obviously, it's the board's determination. I think that there are certainly benefits of teachers being able to, and we're not talking about communicate, we're talking about texting. There certainly can be benefits, but there are also issues that could arise, and do we want every teacher texting with every student when we can't track that in any way? There are other issues, other than public records issues, that can be, that can arise in such a circumstance. So if people are using, and I, and I'm not sure why particularly it's easier to text than it is to email, because I can do both with my thumbs from my phone, but, but we can track the district email, and if there's a problem, we can easily get that. It may be very hard to get teachers' text messages to, to and from a student. So from a liability standpoint, it would also behoove us, I believe, to direct people toward something that the school board can monitor if necessary. But that's a policy decision for the board to make.
I think, yeah, I mean, I don't, I, what's presented, I'm, I'm fine with.
I'm fine with it.
Shirley, are you still?
Well, I, I don't know why parents wouldn't be treated the same way with students, because we don't want them contacting the parents the same way, we don't want them contacting the students, except for these, or if they do, that we need to save them. But we can, I guess, use it with non-students.
Yes, item seven, I mean, text messages, official communications with non-students would include our parents. Would include parents, and, and the reason to treat them differently is because
Meters?
Teaching, teaching with adult, you know, communicating with adults can be seen as different than communicating with a 12-year-old. I mean, that's
I agree.
I've seen some texts that are very inappropriate sent to students that probably would not be as inappropriate if they were sent to big kids.
That's exactly right. Sometimes, not always.
Let's stay away from them.
Okay.
Where would you like us to go next?
I am fine with this.
I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Then we will put it on a school board agenda.
To be advertised.
Permission to advertise?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Four minutes left.
Lunch to one.
Lunch to one.
Your daughter calls the teacher and asks him
We adjourned.
I'm taking my kid to do that, he just says I don't have homework. My daughter, she didn't send the text, and then get help on that homework, and it's too passionate.